There we go, lights, camera, action.
Welcome, everybody. We'll get started. Be called to order for the Fayette County Commissioners Meeting. It is Thursday, July 17th, approximately 10:20. We do apologize for delay. We had a, an issue with our IT. Everybody will stand for a moment and say a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark, can you, can you help us with, you're going to stay and help us with this?
Yeah, I'm just going to make sure we're having an audience.
Okay. No, just have a seat there, behind you. Whenever we have a speaker, whenever we have a speaker, you can. All right, at this point, it is time for public comment on agenda items. So, if any of you would like to make a public comment on agenda items, now's your time.
Ross.
We're going to let you come up here, Ross. State your name.
I'm Ross Moner, Springfield Township Supervisor, plus on the Recreation Board, and Stephanie Kane's here also. She's on the Recreation Board and Township Secretary. And we've come here to thank the Commissioners for getting our project funded and about ready to go on our walking trail at the Mill Run Recreation Field. And we really do appreciate it. It will be well-used. There's a lot of tourism up there and plus locals, and it's a big thing for us, and we'd like to thank yous. Thank you once again. Hopefully working on some future projects down the road.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yes, I, I know, I just want to say that, sorry that we had to, we had some delays. That happens sometimes, and, but we, we stayed focused on it. And I know Joe Ambrose has worked very closely with you all, and he keeps us up to date on what's happening, but everything came in, the bid came in under budget, and we're ready to go.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ross. Any other public comment on agenda items? Hearing none, we'll call for number four, the report of the Controller, Mr. Rose.
Morning, everyone. The July 2025 Controller's Report. In our cash balance on our general ledger, we have $9,540,423.85. Our trans tax anticipation note of $4,500,025. Revenue in our budget, we have $57,208,324.46. Year-to-date, $37,564,686.30. The percentage received is 65.66. And our expenditures for '25 in our budget, $55,298,50.85. Year-to-date, $29,940,52.57. The percentage used is 54.14 percent. Money's due to the general fund. Payroll payments due to general fund, $9,420,629.71. Loan payable due to general fund through CYS is $3,050,000, for a total of $12,470,629.71. In our Act 13 Marcella Shell Fund, our cash balance unconventional wells account, $592,646.90. Our cash balance in the legacy account, $120,924.4. Cash balance in our Bridge Department account, $2,084,487.19. In our Capital Reserve Fund, Fund 51, our cash balance is $261,987.70. Thank you.
If you have questions on the Controller's Report, please contact your Controller. Thank you, Mr. Rose. All right, number five, Behavioral Health Administration, Amy.
Consider approval of the following contract professional services and modification agreements as listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carries three zero. Number six, children and youth.
Consider ratification of a purchase of service agreement between the county through CYS and Justice Works Youth Care, Inc., 1500 Ardmore Boulevard, excuse me, Suite 410, Pittsburgh, PA, for placements and in-home services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Consider ratification of a fiscal year 2024-25 purchase of service agreement between the county through CYS and juvenile probation, and Hope's Haven Residential Services, LLC, 697 Mardickville Road, Piqua, PA, for group home placement on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the county through CYS and juvenile probation, and Three Rivers Adoption Council, DBA Track Services for Families, 1600 West Carson Street, Pittsburgh, PA, for foster care placement on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the county through CYS and juvenile probation, and Crossroads Group Homes and Services, Inc., 1243 Roemer Boulevard, Farrell, PA, for group home placement services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the county through CYS and David D. Tomasi Esquire, 720 Vanderbilt Road, Connelsville, PA. Attorney Tomasi was court-appointed to represent children and dependency proceedings. The rate for his services is $75 per hour.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the county through CYS and David D. Tomasi Esquire, 720 Vanderbilt Road, Connelsville, PA, for agency representation. The rate for his services is $125 per hour.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the county through CYS and Justice Works Youth Care, Inc., 1500 Ardmore Boulevard, Suite 410, Pittsburgh, PA, for placements and in-home services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the county of Fayette through CYS and juvenile probation, and New Life Adolescence, LLC, 167 Mountain View Drive, Hillsdale, PA, for residential services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the county through CYS and juvenile probation, and Hoffman Homes for Youth, 815 Orphanage Road, Littlestown, PA, for residential group home and shelter placement on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the county through CYS and juvenile probation, and Blueprints, 150 West Bow Street, Suite 106, Washington, PA. Blueprints will provide foster care and group home services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the county through CYS and juvenile probation, and City Mission Living Stones, Inc., Promise Place, 155 North Gallatin Avenue, Union Town, PA, for the independent living program. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the county through CYS and juvenile probation, and Maricke, Pennsylvania, 620 Germantown Pike, Lafayette Hill, PA, for foster care providers on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the county through CYS and juvenile probation, and Lutheran Service Society of Western, PA, 440 Lincoln Avenue, Pittsburgh, PA, for child welfare services for children and youth. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the county through CYS and juvenile probation, and Diversified Treatment Alternative Centers, 40 Lawton Lane, Milton, PA, for group home and foster care placement. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the county through CYS and juvenile probation, and Hope's Haven Residential Services, LLC, 697 Mardickville Road, Piqui, PA, for group home placement on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the county of Fayette through CYS and juvenile probation, and Twin Pines Family Services, LLC, 1 Washington Street, Suite A, Hopwood, PA, for group home placement shelter services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the county through CYS and juvenile probation, and Families United Network, Inc., 276 Ashler Manor Drive, Muncie, PA, for foster care and group home services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the county through CYS and juvenile probation, and Professional Family Care Services, Inc., 937 Minnehaw Boulevard, Johnstown, PA, for group home placement shelter services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025 purchase of serv-, 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the county of Fayette through CYS and juvenile probation, and Keystone Adolescence Center, 201 Main Street, Greenville, PA, for residential shelter and foster care services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the county through CYS and juvenile probation, and Bethesda Lutheran Services, 15487 State Highway 86, Meville, PA, for residential group home and foster home services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 statement of work between the county through CYS and Computer Aid, Inc., 1390 Ridgeview Drive, Suite 301, Allentown, PA, for fiscal consulting services as a rate of $115 per hour, not to exceed $92,000, up to 800 total hours. Travel time incurred by CAI consultants at the request of Fayette County under the SOW is billable and will be billed at the consultant's hourly rate. Travel must be authorized in writing by the CYS administrator or their designee and includes, but is not limited to, travel to and from client sites, meetings, and any other location necessary for the fulfillment of services. Travel expenses will be billed separately in accordance with the travel reimbursement policy.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Number seven, emergency management.
Consider approval to transfer ownership of a 2009 Carmate trailer, VIN number 5A3C828D99L000901, to Fayette EMS. The trailer was given to Fayette County to be used for POG training and is not needed. Fayette EMS will maintain the trailer, and it will be available to the county EMA if needed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I just wanted to say this is a, a good thing. We have an underutilized piece of equipment that Fayette EMS can utilize. So this is our on, part of our ongoing efforts to make sure that our first responders are better equipped. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Number eight, human resources.
Under Bridge Department, consider approval of the retirement of Philip Pantolo, Lead Mechanic, effective July 18th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Under EMA, consider ratification of the hiring of Cara Pillar, dispatcher trainee, non-union, $15 an hour, effective July 7th, 2025.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider ratification of the hiring of Colleen Plavi, dispatcher trainee, non-union, $15 an hour, effective July 7th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
Second. I'm sorry, there was motion.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded twice. And, any comments? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider ratification of the hiring of Dalton Vitez, dispatcher trainee, non-union, $15 an hour, effective July 7th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider ratification of the hiring of Nicole Belisario, dispatcher trainee, non-union, $15 an hour, effective July 7th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider ratification of the hiring of Olivia Tobai, dispatcher trainee, non-union, $15 an hour, effective July 7th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider ratification of the hiring of Mark Hughes, dispatcher trainee, non-union, $15 an hour, effective July 7th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Under Fayette County Behavioral Health Administration, consider approval of the resignation of Lisa Smith, County Care Manager, effective June 27th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider ratification of the promotion of Jamie Legarsky to Fiscal Officer III, non-union, pay grade 43, step BV, $43.24 an hour, $84,318 annually, effective July 14th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the resignation of Felicia Farrell, County Caseworker II, effective July 9th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Number nine, Office of Tax Services.
Under tax claim, consider approval of the following repository bids opened on July 1st, 2025, subject to all conditions being met. Total bid amount is $11,686.48, as listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a contract between the Fayette County Tax Claim Bureau and Bid for Assets permitting all future tax sales to be held online at www.bidforassets.com instead of having in-person auctions.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? So this is part of our ongoing efforts to streamline and modernize the things we do at the Fayette County Government. This will help cut, cut some costs that we incur in having in-person auctions. Bid for Assets, their fee is zero to the county, so we will save a considerable amount of money. And this is going to change how we've done things and change, obviously, sometimes it's hard, but we will be very transparent and outgoing with all of our outreach to make sure that everybody understands the process.
Somerset County does this, our neighboring county, and it's worked very well for them. I've had discussions with them about it over the last couple of years, and, you know, in this technological world that we're living in, I think it, you know, we need to get, stay with the times, and I think this will be good for the county to get into this online. And the contract we have with Bid for Assets, there's a 90-day out if, you know, things weren't to go good, which I don't anticipate happening, but we do have that flexibility in the contract to, to have an out in the contract rate.
That is correct, yes. Those days are difficult for the staff and the Tax Services Department, or generally, it's Cheryl, my assistant, although I've done it a few times and helped him. They're doing things like we did them 100 years ago when he's in in-person auctions, and a lot of bidding now for a, a lot of matters is now done online, and it seems to work fine, so we're confident that this will work fine. We will be mindful of making sure the legal requirements are met, people having their right to pay their taxes up until the time of sale, make sure that the process allows that, but I think this will be a step forward that will help us. This, this also should help the county with the dollars returned on the sales. It will increase the buyers, it's going to increase the parcels that are sold, and it'll also increase the price of the parcels, so we should see a little dollar gain from that. And for the bidders, they can be online. I mean, they could be sitting on an airplane, of course, it can't be in the air, but they could actually bid from their computers anywhere, so they won't have to be here in person or anything like that. So it's, it's a win-win for everybody, but as Scott mentioned, there is always some nuances that we're going to have to go through with any change, and we are here to help and transparent, and Rebecca and our tax claim, she promises that she'll take care of those needs.
It'll be a learning curve at first, but I think it'll go very smooth.
So without any further comments, call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Just wanted to pause here for a second. Do we need to turn our microphones on now, or are we on here? Okay. All right. Number 10, Planning, zoning, and community development.
Consider approval of an agreement between Fayette County and Gibson Thomas Engineering regarding contract services for the Dunlap Creek Park Trail Project in the amount of $4,400.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
That project is, you know, we had to stay focused on. It was a very, the project was, it was a very big project. It was part of the master plan that was done for Dunlap Creek. The dirt's flying out there, and trees are, the paths being developed. I was out there yesterday, and it's going to be a really nice walking trail, and it'll really enhance our parks. And we're following the plan that the citizens developed.
Good.
Yes.
Okay.
Consider approval of the submission of a grant application to the county's Consider approval of the submission of a grant application to the county's local share account grant program to be used to acquire a mower for the Parks and Recreation Department. Cost estimate is $34,000.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is brought to a move and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who are in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the submission of a grant application to the county's local share account grant program to be utilized as match funding for the Greenways Trails Recreation Program, Web Application 10449160, at Germantown Park Trail Project. Cost estimate is $33,965.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is brought to a move and seconded. Any further discussion?
This is one of our three parks in the county and, uh, you know, we're following that master plan. Uh, that was what they wanted, uh, in Phase One is this walking trail out there and, um, we're trying to fund these things where it's not in our general funds, so that's why this request is being made.
Any further comments? Call for a vote. All who are in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval to award bid 25-09 for construction of the Mill Run Park Trail to El Grande of De Nora in an amount of $122,388.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is brought to a move and seconded. Any further discussion?
Um, this, this part, this park is count, we own the land up there. That's why we're doing all the legwork, uh, to get this trail built up there. It's not a county park, but it's land that the county owns and, uh, it's certainly a nice piece of land for this and it'll, as the township supervisor reminded, said, uh, when he, during the public comment, it'll really enhance the quality of life in Mill Run and, uh, you know, I, I'm glad this is getting done. This, a park had, that land had potential up there, so.
And it did come in for a lot of bid, too.
Yep.
So, that was a positive.
It's a beautiful park of the creek that runs around it and, uh, great potential. Out of the center of the community, yeah. Fire department right there, all filled with birds.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who are in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the geotechnical proposal for the Sheepskin Trail Nile and Bridge Trail Section from American Geotechnical and Environmental Services, Inc. in the amount of $40,000. AGES, Inc. is located at South Point Business Park, 4 Grand View Circle, Suite 100, Cannonsburg, PA. Funding for this will come from the Sheepskin Trail Fund.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is brought to a move and seconded. Any further discussion? This is part of a PennDOT requirement that we need whorings for, uh, making the, the bridge out on that road. Any further, uh, comments? Call for a vote. All who are in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
This is a PennDOT requirement. Uh, if you want their grant money, you have to comply.
I just wanted to take a minute to say, uh, to thank, uh, our Parks Director, Joey Ambrose, and our, uh, planning and zoning, Grant Redder, Art Capella. Both of them have done a lot of work on these last five, uh, motions that we've made, so thank you so much.
Yeah, they're, they're really working hard at it and this is our commitment to enhancing our parks. We had made that commitment several years ago. We've always had nice parks, but we're stepping it up and making the quality of life better for Fayette County and people that may come into the county.
Consider approval of a submission of a grant proposal to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the Fayette County Sheriff. The grant is for acquisition of top books, laptops for vehicles, and other pertinent upgrades related to job safety for deputies. There is no match requirement. The grant amount is $32,668 and the deadline is August 21, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is brought to a move and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who are in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
We like when they find these grants, uh, you know, for law enforcement.
Again, trying to keep our first responders equipped.
Is this a replacement of laptops or is this new?
Says acquisition of top books, laptops for vehicles. I guess that's all new laptops.
All right. Number eleven, solid waste recycling and store.
Consider approval for Director Sheila Shay to attend the 2025 Keep Pennsylvania Beautiful Conference in State College, PA, October 15th and 16th, 2025, at no cost to the county. KPB Mini Grant will reimburse the costs associated with hotel registration fee and travel for the conference.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is brought to a move and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who are in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval to apply for the 901 Household Battery Management Education Grant for educational materials for public awareness of the dangers associated with improper disposal of lithium ion and other batteries.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is brought to a move and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who are in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Number twelve, commissioner's office.
Consider approval of the June 24, 2025 Commissioner's Agenda Meeting Minutes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is brought to a move and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who are in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the June 26, 2025 Commissioner's Meeting Minutes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is brought to a move and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who are in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the exoneration of all delinquent county taxes, interest, penalties, and costs related to the former Holy Rosary Church and ancillary parcels consisting of the former convent and parking lot identified as parcels 30-24-0162, 3D-0-24-160, and 30-24-144 situated in Republic Redstone Township. The property is now being used by a nonprofit organization dedicated to preservation and development of the arts in Fayette County.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is brought to a move and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who are in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider the appointment of Dale Mallon's Act to the Redevelopment Authority of the County of Fayette with the term of July 9, 2025 to July 8, 2030.
That's a reappointment.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is brought to a move and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who are in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
If that, if that can be reflected as a reappointment.
Reappointment.
Consider approval of the cooperation agreement for Brownsville Water Street Revitalization Project between Fay Pen Economic Development Council, Team Humanity LLC, and Fayette County as attached.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is brought to a move and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who are in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider an appointment to the House Center Authority for a term to expire January 1, 2026 due to the resignation of Harry Kaufman.
Is there a nomination?
I, I make a motion for Warren Hughes.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is brought to a move and seconded. Any further discussion?
Uh, he was the only one that applied, uh, but, uh, I think his, yeah.
But he's a great guy, too. He has a lot of experience. He's the county manager.
Yeah, he was the county manager for many years and, uh, he actually oversaw, uh, buildings and grounds in the county, so he's, he's, uh, ingenuic and cost-effective and I think he-
Well-qualified.
I was glad that he was willing to do it.
So without further comment, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All who are in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider ratification of the following transfers that occurred in the 2025 budget from July 1 to July 11, 2025, with debits and credits in the amount of $25,326.90.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is brought to a move and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who are in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. All right. Number thirteen, public announcements.
The Agenda Meeting of the Fayette County Commissioners for August 2025 is canceled. The voting meeting will be held at 10:00 AM Thursday, August 21, 2025, at the first-floor meeting room of 2 West Main Street, Union Town.
So we have a conflict for that date, so we are, uh, not going to have our Agenda Meeting. Our agenda will still be posted, uh, either Friday before a meeting, which is six days' notice, uh, which supersedes Sunshine Law by five days. There you go.
It's not required, it's not required to have a-
Right.
Is that, yeah.
Not required to have a, an Agenda Meeting. We do it just to, you know, let the public know what, uh, but we would serve that same purpose if we just post it, uh, six days early.
Correct. We, uh, since we'll be at the CCAT conference, which is in, which is partially in Fayette County.
Right.
So we need to be there.
Okay. Uh, we do have some public comment on, uh, the, uh, Zoom. Uh, Mark, if you would like to, to read the public comment, maybe?
Yes. Erica thanked us for the Sheepskin Trail and the, and the, pursuing of the grants for other fundings. Bill Tockington thanked us for the continued support towards the improvements of Dunlap Creek Park and the Sheepskin Trail. Eric Snyder thanked us for the, uh, support of the, of the Trail Network in Fayette County. And Erica, again, thanked us for the Sheepskin Trail vote. And Bill Tockington also thanked us for the support of the Sheepskin Trail and the Agenda items on the other trails and restoration of life.
Yeah, they, uh, they really stepped up with the group, uh, Trails, uh, what's it called?
Fayette Trail Coalition.
Fayette Trail Coalition. They're very proactive and supporters of any kind of bike trails or walking trails and we appreciate, uh, their efforts.
So I don't think there are any public comments in the room since we have media members in here, but I will let open the room for public comment. Hearing none. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is brought to a move and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All who are in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero and we are adjourned. Thank you so much.